Before we begin, I'll go over. This room, in an emergency, everyone must evacuate through the nearest safe exit. Those seated in the gallery take direction from security to evacuate. Council takes direction from the meeting clerk to evacuate. After evacuating the room, please proceed to a stairwell. Take the stairs to ground level and evacuate the building through the doors marked Emergency Exit and go to the muster point. Do not take an elevator or walk through the city room. Anyone with limited mobility should identify themselves to security or the meeting clerk during an evacuation. Finally, please speak with security or the meeting clerk if you require first aid. Thank you.
Thank you and good morning, everyone. We are calling back to order the November twenty fourth, twenty fifth, twenty sixth council orientation meeting. And I'll start with a roll call, Council Principate.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council Morgan.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor.
Good morning.
Chance, thank you, Counselor Rutherford.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor Clark.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor Tang.
Good morning, I'm virtual, train's down.
Thank you. Yeah. Counselor Palmer.
Good morning.
Good morning. Counselor Paquette.
Morning.
Good morning, Counselor Salvador.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor Stevenson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor Elliott.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor Wright.
Good morning.
Good morning, excellent. So everyone is here. We had finished the presentation on item seven point five yesterday. And we are now ready to go into questions about the, that particular report for growth planning. So happy to take names on the board if folks have questions. It was really important information that I hope folks were watching and paying attention to from seats that might be up there. At least one might cover what was such a really, really valuable report that I hope Edmontonians actually know about, please. There might not be as many questions about said very important report about how growth impacts the city and costs and budgets. But now I've delayed enough time to at least see one member of council go on the board for questions. We'll go to Counselor Stevenson.
Just had to save you there, Andrew.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, apologies. Yeah, no, thank you, thank you so much for the report. And you know, Mr. Mayor actually spoke to a point I really wanted to underscore is, is linking the conversation we had around fiscal sustainability and, and the way that we grow. So Ms. Petra, maybe could you, could you talk about how different types of the development have, or different locations of development have different, different financial implications for the city?
Counselor Stevenson, I'd maybe refer to slide fifteen where it sort of highlights how we build matters. And the different types of development each represent different property values which in turn generate different amounts of taxes. So higher intensity uses lead to better operating cost efficiency and higher tax revenue.
Great, well, and I think it's, you know, it's always interesting. One of the things I hear with, within fill, for example, is people say, oh, it's, it's a tax grab by the city. And I think my response is typically like, yes, like we, we actually do want more people contributing to, to our services, especially in areas where that development doesn't increase operational costs. Is that, is that a fair statement?
I would add that, you know, when you look at city plan and our guiding values are really around how we, how Edmontonians want to experience their future city. So city plan talks about wanting to belong and contribute, live in a place that feels like home, have access, an ability to create and innovate. And that really comes from the organizing structure of how we plan and grow our city around urban vibrancy intensification, mix of uses. So I would look further to the outcomes we're trying to achieve in building a place for Edmontonians to thrive.
Yeah, well, I think, I think again, part of that connectivity inclusive communities also, also links back to affordable communities as well, which, which to me speaks to our financial sustainability. I wanted to touch base too on slide sixteen. So just looking at, you know, last year being a pretty exciting year in terms of starting to come close to, to meeting our fifty fifty split between new areas and infill. Just, just any, any comments on that? I think seeing that forty four percent, much higher than, than we've seen in previous years and that, that is working towards our goals, is that correct?
It, that's correct. So city plan's target is that fifty percent of our infill is within the redeveloping communities. So we are, are trending in that, that way. I, I know that I have Kent Snyder, Branch Manager from Planning and Environment Services online as well, if he wants to add further to this. But also that when we look at the, the full life of city plan, we are seeing that increase. But overall, I think it's around twenty eight percent collectively is, is the amount of infill that we've seen in our redeveloping communities. So as we grow closer to two million population, we will need to see continued intensification within our redeveloping communities.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. And I, and I believe too, over the lifespan of, of city plan, you know, it goes to fifty fifty, I think around the one point two five mark. But then, then the expectation is that that decreases, particularly as some of the, what we consider new neighborhoods now are, are redeveloping in the future. Last point, just around the future growth area, you know, and I, and I mentioned it with the, the financial sustainability report, but again, just really important to me that when we're, we're seeing the recommendations for the mix of land uses, that that is going to be tied directly back to, to tax revenue, to our non-residential tax base or balancing that out. Is that, could you talk about how that work is being approached?
So there's a number of projects as we do the analysis around the future growth area. So one of them looking at a high level servicing study, but also the cost of growth in terms of the costs that it'll take from an infrastructure perspective. We also have a motion that's looking at the amount of residential and non-residential land within the future growth area and what were the assumptions that we considered when city plan was first done. So revalidating that work, which would inform the, the, the tax assessment question that you have.
Revalidating and then also coming with corrective options potentially?
I guess council could direct if there were changes needed in terms of how they wanted to see, how we want to see that future growth area develop.
Thank you, Counselor Salvador.
Yeah, thank you. Really, really appreciate this presentation. And I think it really underscored the very close connection between fiscal sustainability and the way that we grow. So I actually wanted to just dig into affordability. And what slide was it? I don't have the slide number in front of me, but you know, I, I often hear from folks concerned that when, when new infill is being built, that that individual project isn't necessarily affordable. But can you just talk a little bit about how, how that relates to the overall housing market? And how is that supporting affordability? How is Edmonton performing compared to other major Canadian municipalities?
So Counselor Salvador, I think you were referring to slide ten, which was a slide we shared on the housing affordability context. So on that slide, we reflected that Edmonton's shelter cost to income ratio remains the, below the benchmark of thirty percent for both owners and renters. But as it relates to infill, you know, we're really providing more housing supply and different types and forms of housing supply, which, which support where Edmontonians can have choices to live.
What are we seeing in other municipalities that maybe haven't taken some of the steps that we've taken to, to allow for more diverse housing options within existing communities?
Every community will have their own challenges, but certainly when we look at the comparison between other big cities, Edmonton is quite affordable compared, you know, in terms of the top five big cities in Canada. And, you know, our ability to deliver more housing faster, given some of the changes that we have in our policy process and, policy and process improvements has really enabled us to build more housing faster and deliver on that much more quickly. And we can see that in the data from how the industry or how we've performed as a city in the last two years.
Thank you. I also wanted to ask about the work that's happening around total cost of ownership. I'm quite, quite excited about this work. I'm so happy that we're, we're doing this. Maybe just to really, really, really understand it. Is it correct to understand that we're trying to take a, a more holistic picture at, you know, what, what types of assets not only are we, we contributing, but might be contributed when new neighborhoods are being built so that we know the full lifecycle costing of those assets? Is that the correct understanding?
Thank you, Counselor, yes. So the goal is to really understand both the long-term impacts in terms of operating and maintenance. So everything from snow removal to ongoing maintenance, like repaving and things like that, as well as eventual future replacement of assets.
In the absence of having this body of work as a reference point when we're making decisions, how, how have things been operating so far, I guess? So when new, new assets get contributed, we don't sort of automatically see as decision makers that additional cost or burden, right? How does that show up currently and what would be different after we've done this body of work?
So I think we can see things over time. And so I think my colleague Kim talked about how new neighborhoods can take up to twenty years to develop. If we look over throughout the city of Edmonton and, and as a new person, I've been exploring the city, you can kind of see the impact of decisions over time. And so I was driving some of our arterial roads the other day. There are points where arterial roads have four lanes and then they narrow to two lanes and then they go back to four. Some of those are a legacy of policies in, in new developments in terms of what was required by the developer at the time, both in terms of the width of the roadways as well as into, we as the city have to look at, once those become our assets, what is both the cost of growing those as well as the cost of maintaining and operating and eventual replacement of those assets?
Great, yeah, thank you. Not looking at my time. I do have one more, but maybe someone else will ask it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, just, just three questions for you guys. We, we talk about the city plan and maybe we mentioned about the review now that we're coming up in five years, as of what, next week, I think it is. And just specific to growth, like some of the comments in the presentation, you know, we've got a city plan philosophy, it's adaptable, it's evergreen, and then we also want a predictable environment, you know, for business and for everybody, right? So how, how do we balance those two? And, and I guess kind of in my context is, you know, we're probably going to get into more of a two percent growth rate as we, as we see in that chart from years on. So some, just some comments on, on that, please.
So the city plan provides that organizing structure for how we grow in terms of our, our goal of welcoming one million more Edmontonians, so the population to two million. And it's really focused around growth and intensification along nodes and corridors. And so, you know, subsequent to that, we did the district planning work that really provided more clarity on where we would anticipate to see that intensification. And so as we approach that one point two five million population milestone, we will reflect on, you know, where are adjustments needed? And when it talks about, or when I reference that predictable business environment, you know, when we're looking at attracting investment or building more homes for people or investing in infrastructure, we want to ensure that we're doing so in a place that we're, we're going to see more investment for more homes or businesses. And so it's, it's, that's maybe more in reference to the zoning bylaw in terms of having that predictable regulatory environment of where to anticipate growth.
Yeah, so if I'm hearing you correctly, I mean, we, we don't want to be changing it every six months. We want it to be stable to obviously attract the investment on it. And this might be a great time to kind of get this right with this five-year context. Do we have a review coming up on, on that or is it just sort of something admin's kind of doing on their own?
So city plan talked about doing that review at the, every two hundred and fifty thousand population milestone. So because city plan was approved in twenty twenty, it wasn't contemplated in our work plan in the last four years. And so it is something we're thinking about for our next work plan in the next four years.
Yeah, it might be just great timing with us approaching that and it being five years. Nodes and corridors and, and kind of redefining those. I guess my suggestion would be for community input, obviously they know their neighborhoods, communities better than anybody else. If we see that slowing down, I guess it's just a question, in your opinion, we'll continue to grow that, that will help, but it probably isn't going to solve all of our problems, right? So I mean, I guess I don't know, it's kind of a little question, but should we also be looking, in your opinion, looking in other areas as well? Not just on this to try to solve?
I think it speaks to the importance of our discussion yesterday on economic development in terms of where we're investing, how we're incentivizing economic growth in our city and what kind of growth. And so we need neighborhoods and communities for people to live and 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 build their family, but we also need places for people to have a job. So both of those things are important and we have to plan for both. So it just demonstrates the importance of both of those.
Both can be true at the same time, is what I'm hearing. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jans.
Thank you. What percentage of our housing stock is RS or or RSF? Or I guess maybe a question might be single family homes?
Councillor Jans, I I may need to pass to someone on the team for this question. I I I think I would just highlight, though, that our small scale residential zone is not exclusively for single detached residential. It does allow for a diversity of housing types. But if anyone from the team on the line has a sense of that number, that can help.
We don't have the stats at this time councillor. We it is available, but through the conversations, as Kim mentioned in January, we'll probably get warmed with that data as well in terms of the breakdown of housing types, lot types, et cetera.
Okay. And am I to recall in the substantial completion work that there are enough lots currently available for single family homes for, I think it's 75,000 or is it 80,000? Homes within the existing growth boundary before we even go into South of 41st Ave, is that correct?
So councillor, branch manager Kent Snyder here. So that is, that was about a year and a half ago when that report was at committee. And that was, your your memory is correct, I think it was 70, 75,000. Those weren't lots that were ready to go in terms of ready for building permits, that the land has been serviced. But in terms of what has been approved by council that could be translated to future lots. But yeah, that's the, that is the quantity that was estimated about a year and a half ago. Now that's, we've had a substantial year, a couple of years of growth. So that will be a number, number will be less, but yeah, you're correct.
But if I if I recall, that number didn't also include exhibition lands. It didn't include the West 240. It didn't include other parcels we've unlocked since then, such as the, you know, the the Lowe's, well, the Lowe's Rona apartment that we rezoned over by White Men Crossing Library. I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of is before we sprawl any further, how much capacity and room do we have in existing areas, in areas that we may wish to rezone? And how do how do we minimize future liabilities in terms of further sprawl?
So councillor, as part of that report you you referenced, that was at the previous council, that was one of the questions assigned to administration is come back. You gave council, that council gave us some new criteria to to consider. But though all those numbers and updating of what is our current lot supply will come back about a year from now, early 2027 for council. So we are reporting back on the substantial completion. It'll come back at the same time when the servicing study comes back, trying to unlock the non-resident or options to unlock non-residential lands in the future growth area. So there will be a decision point in the future for council with updated data coming.
And councillor Jans, I would just flag that our city plan articulates developing and redeveloping communities. And I think you're referring to the developing communities.
Yeah, sorry, there's 75,000 lots within the developed, like the redeveloping area, is that correct?
I think the 75 was for the entirety, the redeveloping and developing estimated at that point in time.
Okay. I guess, is there, given given that chart with the the kind of six six typologies of land use and then the the tax uplift or liability for each of them? Do we have a another report or something else that's talking about how we're minimizing liabilities? Like we talk about closing the structural deficit, but what about the sort of the the physical structural deficit of, like, how are we minimizing future liabilities and how are we building a more efficient city?
Councillor Jans, I think, you know, we are planning growth as it relates to city plan organized around nodes and corridors. There was a financial assessment that was done in terms of the growth scenario for city plan. And so that's that's our guiding guiding document in terms of policy direction for how we grow.
Can I, can I also add, oh, sorry. The fiscal impacts of growth on slide 32 will look at new developments and making sure we have an appropriate balance there that is sustainable.
But against each other or against the entirety?
Very much, that's your time councillor Wright.
Thank you. Just sort of following up councillor Salvador's questions. And and Ms Nichols, your answer about, you know, current arterial roads that don't quite meet the needs of the residents. In the presentation, there was a slide that talked about when the ARA policy was last updated, 2006. Is there any plan for review of that policy? I know some of the, some of the guiding documents were updated from an audit in in 2022. But any anything that you would, your department would be doing on on that?
Councillor Wright, it's urban planning and economy that leads on the arterial roadway assessment work. I'll pass to Travis Pollock, branch manager of Development Services, whose team leads that work.
I am just wondering, though, but isn't that more of an infrastructure?
The arterial roadway bylaw is related to private investment in infrastructure.
So councillor, the the ARA bylaw guides how we fund and build arterial roadways, as you know, through the developer contributed assets. Please, there is no plan to update that right now. With the last update and requiring four lanes for arterials to be developer contributed, we're in the right spot of where we need to be. I think you may be speaking to the timing of the building of those roads, which, as we move forward, will present a arterial roadway sort of one on one session early in the new year and how that all works, so that there's visibility into that. And if we have further discussion there, we can take that direction.
Okay, I'm just, I, to me, that's major infrastructure, isn't it, our our roadway? I just don't understand why. I I know it relates to development, but.
I councillor, to to the comments, I think it's really about, things are built at a point in time. You know, in some ways, we are all inheriting history. And and so when it comes to infrastructure, is after it already exists and is a city asset? Or if we're deciding to grow existing city assets? And so I think we work very closely with our colleagues in UPE who are planning with developers on private assets into the future. And then we're eventually, those assets become city assets and we work very closely on that with UPE and with others. And then we develop our long term maintenance and renewal plans related to those new assets.
Okay, I I just. When we're looking at building bridges and that, that's not done through UPE, right? That's, is that because then it stays as a public asset?
So I think this is around, if we are, I think there would be both. And I will look to my colleagues in UPE on, you know, I'm sure there's sometimes assets in new areas that may include a bridge or a culvert or things like that. In terms of major river crossings and transportation routes, we we relate to the city plan and the overall transportation plans. And then we would be looking at our existing crosses and and our transportation modeling and our data to plan for future city growth assets.
Okay, okay, I I will wait for further discussion in January. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Palmer.
Hi, thank you very much for this presentation. I'm interested in slide number 15, density matters. I think it's great, important to see the tax differential between the types of of housing. I'd also be interested to see the other side of the story of the expenses for each of those. Because sometimes when you see a slide like that, it will show that, you know, we can get X amount of taxes. But what I don't necessarily see is the the expense side on it and what's the net? Because police for, you know, the assessment of of 31.2 million is different than police probably for the 3.2 million. And it's not a one to one, but there definitely is a graduated in terms of fire services and police. So I'd love to be able to see the flip side of that slide if possible.
Councillor Palmer, that's that's a great reflection and feedback. And would add to that when we are doing intensification and increased density, there is a need for amenities for that to support as well. So yeah, appreciate that.
Exactly. And I think it's really interesting to see the city plan. I think, you know, as council, we obviously need to keep on looking to the future. And it's hard for, you know, I think even the comments around the 2 million people, a lot of times my the residents that are in in my ward can't see that 2 million people. So it'd be great to be able to chunk it over. And as we relook, I think that the way that the city plan is going is great. It's just like what, where are the next 250,000 people going to live? And where where do we, where do they want to live? And I would love to get a sense, does the city of Edmonton or administration know where people want to live? Because as we looked at where we wanted to develop and then seen where people live, a lot of people do want to live in the suburbs still. And I'm a question is, is because it's the type of of housing or is it, do we know the answers to those questions?
We we do have data in terms of some of the forecasting and modeling on this. I can pass to the team just to share more in terms of how we're planning for that and what we know.
Sure, it's Kent Snyder again, branch manager, planning and environment. So in terms of when we look at just the raw numbers of market in terms of where permits go and and where folks want to be, a lot of those folks want to be in redevelopment or in developing areas on greenfield on our edges, new neighborhoods for for a number of reasons. They could be based on their commuting, where they work reasons. Perhaps they work in the region or or work on on the edges or they have a family structure that that warrants that. So we're we're all unique and different and have different needs. And so the city plan accommodates those those different needs. In terms of how we look at the redeveloping area, we have done marketing studies to determine where the market would like to see redevelopment. And we've overlaid that with where our infrastructure capacity is. And so a piece of work last year was the priority growth areas and making sure that the infrastructure and our zoning regulations and the market all overlap so that we were providing, reducing barriers in areas where people wanted to to invest and live.
Okay, thank you for that. I also want to, when I, I think during the last six months, we've seen a report out from Build around Windermere and how Windermere actually brings in money. Does administration have any comments on on that report or has something come forward?
We are doing some work around that. I'll pass to Kent as it relates to the work we have around our fiscal impacts of growth. So that is a study that we are working through right now. Kent, do you want to share a bit more?
Yeah, so that that is a current new piece of work that we're we're looking at. And it's really important as the city, as we grow into new neighborhoods, that we understand how that affects our our finances as the city. And so we're looking at a really broad cross section of what the the financial impact will be, not just on certain pieces of infrastructure, but trying to take a very holistic approach to new neighborhoods, what the capital costs are. And then really importantly for for the city and taxpayers is what are those ongoing operational costs long term? And how do they balance out?
Thanks, I don't have time for another question, but I will say that, you know, we, I think we heard that it takes 20 years to develop, you know, new neighborhoods. And it would be great to understand how long it takes to actually get the first house in that neighborhood. Because I wouldn't, would would hate to not develop and not have the, you know, like the South of 41st ready for the next tranche of 250,000 people, depending on how long it takes of their current housing supply. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan.
Thanks.
Oh, wait, sorry, sorry, no, actually, it was councillor Elliott was originally, the the Escribe system reset on us. So it's councillor Elliott, then councillor Morgan, then councillor Elliott, sorry. If you want to continue, my friend, it's okay.
No, no, I'm going to stick to the order. Go ahead councillor Elliott. Thank you. I'm just referring to slide 24 on regional growth. For my, I noticed that there is no regional planning oversight and IDPs and IICs required within neighbor and municipalities. Pardon my ignorance on this, but I know the Edmonton Metro Region Board was dissolved. I don't know if this is the the place here, if I can take this offline or here before us. Is that, what was the purpose of the region board and why was it dissolved? And is there any discussion of it returning? Because I'm I'm not aware of it. So I wonder if you can provide insight.
Councillor Elliott, I can share follow up with more information on that. But it it was dissolved through the government of Alberta earlier this year. And so there was a growth plan that articulated sort of the servicing, the transportation and the growth of the region that we all adhere to. Now that that's been dissolved, we have to do the planning work with the municipalities along our borders. So.
And maybe just to add to that, the regional mayors and CAOs are still meeting. So even though the the EMRB is dissolved, we're looking at what what collaboration framework looks like beyond EMRB as a voluntary kind of approach to to regionalization here, so.
Yeah, thank you for that, because I know Mayor Nock brought up about the relationships that we need to have with our neighboring counties and towns, and I agree with him on that point. So I was just curious about this, but I appreciate the insight.
Thank you very much councillor Morgan.
Did you want to reference or welcome our guests?
Soon, once I get, go ahead, you start and then I'll do it after.
No, I appreciate it. Okay, so I I see some discussion and reference to district planning, something our community leagues are very much centered around in the city. And so I guess my question is, what value does the city place in in community leagues for for communication to residents and stakeholders around all this work, I guess?
Councillor Morgan, there's a number of interested parties in the work, along with Edmontonians in general, that we do try to engage in either more broadly or more directly. We leverage our partnership with the Edmonton Community League, Edmonton Federation of Community Leagues to help disseminate information to community leagues. When we were doing the work on district planning and the zoning bylaw, sometimes we had just community league specific meetings or chat with a planner type meetings, or we would attend a session with the community leagues. So we gather all of that feedback to help inform our work. And when things come to council, we try to summarize that and provide it, provide it in a what we heard report. And so you'll see that through the public hearing, land use public hearing reports, where we articulate who we heard from and what we heard. And then that can be used for council to inform your decision making.
So I I guess, I guess further that, I guess, what kind of prioritization do we have for for community league involvement in the growth plan?
Well, I think at the start of every project, we map out who the interested parties are and who we should be engaging. And the community leagues are are definitely an important part of that.
So with their, with, I guess, with their aging infrastructure and and their challenges around that, do we, I guess, where does that fit within the growth plan to to support as well?
Are you referring to like the community league facilities in the?
Yeah, facilities in general, yeah, yeah.
I know we've done some work on that. I'll I'll pass to Sarah to speak to that.
So councillor, just a point of clarity. It's my understanding, we we as the city of Edmonton don't own or operate the community league halls. And so they are individually operating and maintaining their community halls. I'm going to ask Pascal to weigh in on, we have received some information about the state of their assets. And and so I think just a point of clarity that those are not owned by the city of Edmonton. Pascal?
Yep, so thanks Sarah. So yeah, so we are, so IS is working with Community Services and Social Development Branch on a report back to council planned for mid 2026 that will speak to what we've heard from the community leagues related to their asset challenges and what that will provide a discussion with council around if there is a thought of how the city supports the community leagues moving forward. And so that will be coming back and that will be an opportunity for that discussion to happen.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I guess just my, you know, it, those are, those may not be owned by the city of Edmonton, but they are owned by all of Edmontonians. And so I just want to make sure that that's prioritized as well. but they are owned by all of Edmontonians. And so I just want to make sure that that's prioritized as well. So anyways, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And before I go to Counselor Rutherford, we have some guests in city hall and council chambers. We have the grade-two class from A Blair McPherson School in Ward-Sapome-Tappy. Your counselor, right on the very end there is Counselor Joanne Wright, who's waving at you, and your teacher, Mrs. A Hutchinson, I believe is our teacher. No, that's the, they told me something. Who are you, teacher? Stephanie Gaynor is our teacher. Mrs. Gaynor is here, or Miss Gaynor is here to be here. So you are on a tour today? Fantastic. Are you, what's on the agenda for touring today? Just a tour of city hall? Are, I don't know, do the grade-two classes do mock city council? Not today? Sometimes they do, I believe. But so you'll just be enjoying the tour all morning or right to lunchtime or? Half hour left. What's been, what's been your favorite part of the tour so far, somebody? Anyone got a favorite part of the tour so far? Yeah, I see one hand. I'm going to go to you right there in the sort of black, yes, right there. Great answer, great answer. Coming to city council chambers, always the right answer in that you get to watch our riveting council meetings as we talk about growth planning. I actually really enjoy our council meetings, but they're not always exciting for every single person. But thank you so much for being here today. We really appreciate having you. Thank you for coming. And feel free, I think you'll probably be leaving as Counselor Rutherford begins to ask questions. Don't take that as a sign that I don't want to hear your questions.
I was about to say, I thought you were going to give a plug to my great question.
I was about to, but now I can't.
Okay. I'm sure administration's not going to be surprised at where I want to start. Can we pull up the slide on mass transit planning? It's Slide twenty-eight or twenty-nine, I believe. I'd like a visual on the screen. So when I look at this map, and this is the first time I've actually seen, so thank you for this map. I think it shows a very stark gap in our mass transit network. There's literally a quadrant of the city that has no mass transit. And I know the metro line is eventually planned for that. But we've also been having a lot of conversations about the reality of affording LRT and whether even the province would come to the table with funding for LRT. And in the meantime, we've approved two BRT routes. That, and then the future BRT routes are also not in the Northwest. So if we decide to shift in the four-year budget to more investment in BRT, we have an entire quarter of the city that is unserved by mass transit and is paying debt servicing for everybody else to receive mass transit. Thoughts?
I'm not sure if there's anyone on the line. Kent, maybe do you have some background that you could speak to from the, from the planning side to start?
Yeah. So nobody from our transportation group is here to support. But we'll note that, Counselor, you did reference that, you know, these are cascading decisions that have been made by councils in terms of the BR1 and BR2 bus rapid transit corridors. That's shown on the slide here. But they're also linked to the city plan decision. So rewinding five years of decisions of where is our major transportation corridors based on growth and need. But I can appreciate that, you know, what's on paper versus how quickly things get built, that there can be gaps in mobility, especially when we talk about transit. And so I think it is important that we work to provide that equity across the city.
Yeah, so I guess that great point to end with the equity. So how do we, as we're talking about growth planning, at no point has rectifying this in equity and whatever cascading decisions have led to where we are now. I don't think any of my colleagues around this table would disagree that that's a stark picture. And you have low-income neighborhoods, Calder, for example, is a neighborhood where sixty-four percent of residents are in core housing need that are paying debt servicing for LRT and mass transit programs that they will never have access to. So I guess that's my question and need is how do we start to have a conversation to really course correct this? Because if LRT is not, is not a reality, we need to start talking about how do we get BRT in this area? How do we equitably serve mass transit across our city? And to that point, then, I also had, I have no idea what my time is, so time check, okay, I have a minute and a half. I've been really contemplating around parking minimums, and I don't think parking minimums are appropriate in the zones. But I do think there's context in the district plans where, when you are served by mass transit, you should have less parking requirements than areas that are not served by mass transit. So, but what we've actually seen in the inquiry that I did was that the Northwest is actually seeing less parking being provided than the rest of the city, even though they have no mass transit. What are your thoughts on that, Kim?
So the work that we did around open option parking was really on the premise that whether you're a business or a homeowner, you know what you, for your, you know your parking needs. And so that was.
But the HMI Select flipped that on its head.
The which, sorry?
The like, the incentives from the federal government to do eight units. And so it went to where there was low, where the land value was low, but the opportunity for return was high, which was in the Northwest.
And I'm sure that was coupled with where investors or builders would have seen demand in terms of having the ability to find someone to rent or buy the unit.
Okay, I'll come back for a second.
And actually, can you take the chair?
Yeah, I have the chair.
Thank you. Just a few questions on my end here. You know, and I think this probably falls more to if we're planning for the, a little bit to Counselor Clark's point, if we're planning on an update to the city plan in the next four-year budget, because we've essentially already, my guesses will be at one point two-five million by the end of the year based off growth. There's a chance to have a lot of, I would say both the conversation we just heard about, because I think some of this needs to also be, what can we look at creatively? Because I, you know, I'm not suggesting, I'm just giving an example. But do you take a road like Hundred and Thirty-seventh Avenue, which, you know, has a lot of three-lane on each direction? And say, you know, one of that should be our BRT, so we can actually expedite a bus rapid transit right away to fill the equity gap that exists. You know, we're going to be doing that in other parts of the city with Southwest. We'll have the BRT system on Twilliger, which will be amazing. So how do we start filling those gaps? But that would be the place for that work, right? I mean.
Yeah, I think so. So connecting, you know, policy direction and then how we would implement it from an operational perspective and funding, you know, whether it's transit hours or the facility that we need. Yes.
When it comes to the, I also appreciate the question, I think it was Counselor Palmer had asked, sort of the, where do people want to live? I think for me, it's always been tough to answer that question, because until a decade ago, we didn't really give people a choice of where they wanted to live. You could live in the suburbs. Why? Because that's where the cheapest homes were. So I don't know if people are, were choosing the suburbs for any other, you know, I don't want to oversimplify. But when I talk to a lot of the folks in the suburban communities, I used to serve as a ward counselor, they chose there because that was easily the best price point for them to buy a home. Even my neighborhood, a mature neighborhood that's, you know, lower land value, it still was often hard to get something that was competitive with the suburbs, because you could only build a single-family home, which was going to be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But now that you can build town housing in my neighborhood, you can build them for three, sell them for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is competitive with suburbs. So I don't know if that's an oversimplification, but I guess I wouldn't mind your perspective on that. Because it's, for me, it's always been hard to answer that, because we never had data up until the last decade.
Definitely. And we're seeing that transition in terms of the impacts of the zoning bylaw, allowing for more diversity of housing types and the ability to offer, you know, family, units for families, different ages and stages of your life in more neighborhoods that you maybe couldn't have seen that type of development before. Or, you know, what the zoning bylaw did was also make it a little bit more easier in terms of removing some of the barriers and creating more flexibility for builders to respond to the market based on what the demand was in different areas of the city.
How are we, you know, I know you have a good slide there about sort of our housing affordability for different markets, there are different groups. Trying to think of when the next time is that we can start to, you know, I remember the McClain's report from last year, which said we're the most affordable major city in all of Canada. That's great, really encouraging. We still have work to do. Is there, is there more granular data that helps us make sure we can show that a bit more thoughtfully? If only because, again, I think you've seen it and I've seen it, that some of the neighborhoods that we're seeing in Phil, especially those that are higher land values, they don't necessarily see the affordable housing being created in another neighborhood. So their, their only point of reference is their neighborhood where a single-family home that was five hundred thousand dollars gets torn down and it gets replaced with a seven hundred thousand dollar row house or a one million dollar skinny, you know, skinny home or one point five million dollar larger home. So they're not getting to see what's happening across the city, because they're sort of focused on what's in their neighborhood. Have we thought about how we can try to communicate how the changes that have been made are actually impacting affordability as a citywide conversation?
Yeah, I do recognize the changes that are happening in communities where people are feeling that impact. But we, and I'm going to pass to Kent in a moment here, because we did start a study and a body of work in terms of how we're trying to measure affordability and the impacts of changes of policy to affordability. And so we launched that or had our first report of that in two thousand twenty-five. And I believe that's intended to be an annual report, but maybe, Kent, I could just pass to you to expand on that further.
In fifteen seconds.
Yes, it is intended to be that, but also we're looking at getting more granular with including other costs, like transportation costs that aren't calculated often when we talk about affordability.
Love that. Great. That's my time. I'll take the chair back. Thank you, Counselor Prince Fay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question for administration on what the definition of affordability is. When we talk about what the average cost of a home is, I would suggest that there is a large percentage of people that cannot afford that. So what is, what is our definition of affordability?
Counselor Prince Fay, we look at the shelter cost-to-income ratio remaining below the benchmark of thirty percent as how we measure that. I'll maybe just pass to someone from the team if they wanted to expand on that further.
Also, Counselor, it's really important to note that when, some of these ways to measure affordability, there's a substantial deviation in terms of when we look at market affordability for folks, when we look at non-market, when we look at own versus rent affordability, when we throw in other variables such as transportation, if they perhaps live in a neighborhood where they don't have to own a car, they don't want to own a car, and there's other modes that they can use to get around that are cheaper, or there could be childcare if that's a need for them within a neighborhood, because there's those services available. So it's incredibly broad, but we do use the simplistic indicators, at least to give us some baselines that Kim mentioned off the start.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I agree, it is incredibly broad. And that's why we need to be very cautious about the way we use those terms, I believe, all of us on council as well. We need to be very cautious of the way we use that term affordability. And then I do have a question on Slide twenty-two about the Q3 omnibus amendments, One Thirty-two Avenue.
So Counselor Prince Fay, are you, are you wondering specifically what those, what that?
Yes.
Those motions are? So there was one motion, the first one being quite specific about One Thirty-two Avenue Active Transportation Network. The second point around amendments from monitoring. Those are things that we reflect on as a team when we find that there's, you know, administrative updates needed based on how we're seeing the district plans being implemented. We may make similar, like minor amendments, similar to the omnibus amendments we would do for the zoning bylaw. Kent, I'm not sure if there's more information you have on that at this point.
Yeah, maybe just to add a little bit of clarity around the One Thirty-second discussion. It wasn't a direction to change where that corridor was in practice, but it was a desire to reconcile some differences between city policy and how we talked about it within the bike plan network and making sure that it was accurately reflected in the district plan. So it wasn't changing, but it was just making sure it was included in this district planning. So there was a lot of clarity for Edmontonians.
Okay, all right. So yeah, I was just wondering if there was more to come.
It will be a rather underwhelming amendment package, because it will just be new line work. It won't be a new decision point.
Because most of the construction will be completed by then anyways.
Yes, it's not, it's intended to.
Or started, yeah.
Correct. It's intended to reflect reality, not change the course of the corridor.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Did you want to move another round?
Oh, yes, I'm happy to move a second round or another round.
Thank you. And second by Counselor Rutherford, please vote.
Yes.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, for me.
Thank you. We have all the votes. Thank you. Please display the vote. That is carried. And a couple more on the board. Counselor Stevenson.
Yeah, thank you so much. I do apologize for coming around again, but I really wanted to dig in on the question of the future growth area. So, so Ms. Petron, I think what I heard you say is that you'll be coming back, sort of validating the fifty-fifty land use splits in the, you know, in the future growth area, rather than sort of, again, looking at a different options or analysis.
I'm just trying to pull up the motion directions that we got on that. Kent, I don't know if you have that top of hand that you could speak to that.
I happen to have it. So it was that administration moved forward with pre-planning for the future growth area, including a review of land use mixes to optimize the balance of residential, non-residential land to support long-term fiscal sustainability of the city as a whole. And I think it's that city as a whole piece that's really, really critical. So just want to confirm that that is the lens, that's not just looking at balancing growth within the future growth area, but looking holistically at how that non.
Sorry, did Counselor Stevenson, I think you froze.
Yeah, looks like Counselor Stevenson froze.
I'll maybe just, in the interim here, look to Kent when we get Counselor Stevenson back online to speak to the work.
Why don't we, we paused Counselor Stevenson's time. We can go to Counselor Jan's, because I'm going to guess Counselor Stevenson's going to reboot right away. So we'll come back and give them the appropriate time. Counselor Janz?
A similar, similar area of questioning. I'm really concerned not just about the optimizing the mix, but also thinking about our carbon budget and our traffic demand management. And we know that new communities bring a lot more, a lot more traffic, a lot more wear and tear on our roads. How are those, like, it seems we're talking about it in a housing lens. What about the transportation or the carbon budget lens?
So when we do the work around planning, we contemplate, from a servicing perspective, does include the transportation work?
But how does that contribute to our broader city goals of affordability, of mode shift, of everything else? Or even cost recovery? Our roads are not, like, we aren't in a cost recovery position.
I think it speaks to the importance of the number of projects that we're doing as it relates to the future growth area, both in the planning side but also the cost side. So we are looking at the fiscal costs of growth as it relates to the future growth area. City plan does contemplate growth in our future developing area, our future growth area. And so we're, right now, we're just in the pre-planning phase. Looking at what this high-level servicing body of work, what is the cost of growth? And how do we, you know, best create some efficiencies around? How we approach growth in the future growth area, both from the residential and the non-residential perspective. The driver certainly is to unlock the non-residential lands. As we, as we know that that's a key priority.
And I guess my, I hear that and maybe we should have been more clear as council in passing the motion that. We should, we we desire to eliminate liabilities and not balance. And and I think that's, that's something I'll have to take to the clerk about how to figure out to give stronger and clear direction from council. Going forward. I. I guess I'm still. Wondering about in this fiscal gap work and in this planning work, how. The cost of transportation could be the largest cost in an affordability bucket for a household. Car insurance is extremely expensive right now. We see Waymos and self-driving cars. On in Austin and American cities and they're lobbying to come into Canada. I'm wondering if we need to do an additional rethink of our. Of our transportation work and how. How innovations in these things are being factored into things like parking considerations or or just the the. Cost recovery of our of our roadways. Like, we wrote city plan before Waymo was an option. We wrote city plan before. We, you know, had such. Change.
So councillor Janz, is your your question around, you know, the the thinking around how we accommodate movement around the city from a city plan perspective?
Yeah, and 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 how we're gonna, how we're gonna adapt and update that.
I think that's something we would scope in terms of looking at the city plan related to our 1.25 million population horizon. That I referenced, we would be doing as it relates to the next four-year body of work. It's not something we're doing in 2026, but we do recognize the importance of looking and reflecting on. City plan and and if there are tweaks or adjustments that might be needed. So I think that's good feedback for us to also look at the mobility aspect of city plan, not just land use.
Right? So any decision about an ASP or NSP or future growth area? Or any other mix could have, will have some sort of a carbon budget consideration as well, too. Is that correct?
That is an input that we consider and those decisions in terms of planning. Related to, you know, new area structure plans, as you referenced, do come to council for authorization.
Okay, I'll I'll try and find that in the carbon budget. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Wait, I'll just see if councillor Stevenson is back.
I I am. I'm terribly sorry for the abrupt end to my questions there.
That's okay. I think we were at about the three-minute and 50-second mark, give or take, so we can. Let you jump back in with your time.
Great, thank you. So yeah, just just that question around the whole, the whole city look at the future growth area.
So councillor Stevenson, I was able to find the motion where we're looking at the pre-planning for the future growth area. A review of those land use mixes to optimize the balance of residential and non-residential land to support the long-term fiscal sustainability as the city. So that that is a body of work that we are doing right now. And Kent, maybe you could speak to, I can't remember the date that we're targeting to bring that work back to council.
Yeah, so that plus the servicing study, all of this will come as as a package. Early in 2027, so Q1 2027, all of that work will will come back to council for. Review assessment and then talking about next steps and how we'd like to action that work, how council would like to action that work.
Okay, and I apologize, I'm having some at-work connections, so I actually missed what what Kim had said. So the main question is the work that comes back. So we, on our list, we currently have that coming back December 1st of. 2026. But all that to say, so sorry, are we looking at some different land use ratios in the future growth area?
So that that's something, councillor, we are exploring. We're using the work in city plan as a base, but looking to make sure that that is the appropriate base. And we're also adding in some suitability and market component as well to that review. So it, we're also looking at not just the mix, the ratio, but the location as well. And making sure that the non-res is located in the most suitable and appropriate and and ready to move locations as possible.
Great. And so with that, will we be doing that type of modeling that would allow us to look at? You know, the the res non-res assessment value citywide, like what the impact would be with those different scenarios?
At a, at a very high level. But where this work is going to start to. Cross and weave into the city plan review and amendments. So when we talk about one particular area like the future growth area. We'll be able to comment on how it it impacts the citywide perspective or or analysis. But not looking across the city and looking at what other changes may need to be made to find that balance at a macro city level. That's more at the city plan review cycle stage where we look more holistically across the city.
Yeah, certainly. No, I think I think the intent, or certainly my interest, is just understanding. How the future growth area can be a lever to to shift other things at a citywide level. So that's that's helpful. Okay, well, thank you. I really appreciate that clarity. And very much looking forward to that work coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we go to our next councillor, you always get, like, it's always right before you ask questions or like, okay, this is good timing. I believe this is our grade two class. Hello, from Blair McPherson School with our teacher. Teacher Marotra? Marotra? Okay, almost got it, almost got it. You are here today, I think we saw one of your other classes earlier touring, so you're nearing the end of your tour. Excellent. So how has the tour been going so far to the class? Have you had fun? I was like, I saw three thumbs up. Okay, so so not as much fun as, oh, no, okay, there's more thumbs up that came. So you're enjoying, I was like, you don't have to be in class. You get to tour like that to me was always a win, usually. What is, one person's, who wants to tell me their favorite thing they have seen today on their tour? Do you, someone want to give me their favorite thing in class? No? Okay, that's all right. We've got a very shy class. That's all right. I I have, I mask it well, but I'm also a very big introvert, so I don't like to do public speaking. I picked a really weird job to be in. For somebody that doesn't like public speaking. But we are so thankful to have you here. I hope you've enjoyed yourself. And and we'll, I hope you enjoy the rest of your tour. Thanks for joining us today. When I completely forgot to introduce your councillor, your councillor, because you're in wards of Pomi Tapi, is councillor Joanne Wright over there. Who will wave to you. Yeah, please, there you go. So. Always feel free, if you have questions, if you have ideas that you want to share, you can always reach out to councillor Wright. She would be happy to hear from you. We always hear from a lot of different schools on different things, so so don't hesitate to reach out. So thanks for joining us, everyone. And you are in for a treat for however much longer you stay, because now you get to hear questions. From Aaron Rutherford, councillor Aaron Rutherford.
And fun fact, just before I start, well, you can start my time, I'll use some of my time for this. My daughter, when she was like seven, wrote a letter to the mayor, to Iverson at the time. So you're never too young to to share your thoughts and perspectives. I just want to go back to that question that we ran out of time for. So I guess what I'm trying to get an understanding of is as we start to talk about growth and we've talked a lot about the RS zone. But again, I I don't think we're using the district plan as a tool as much in our growth planning as we potentially could. And so I wanted to just get your sense of, is that a place where we should have conversations about parking allocations? In the context of what transit services are available or even forecasted in the next 10 to 15-year horizon?
It's a good observation, councillor Rutherford, and I think, you know, with district plannings having only been approved, you know, one yearish ago. You know, it will take some time for us to really look at how we incorporate that across the organization, how we leverage it to inform planning. Continue to monitor and see, you know, where do we need to make changes? And I think that's part of our continued work together. The opportunity further to the city plan reflection or the city plan 1.25 million would be another opportunity to say like, okay, what's working here? How how and where do we want to grow? What pace, you know, are we growing at and where do we want to invest? So all of those things kind of combined together would help inform that kind of conversation.
Yeah, and I think for me, as we, as we continue this conversation on growth planning. One of the things I would like to see is, because I think there's so much potential to add more context and nuance at the district level. So I want to see us leveraging, now that we have that foundation. I'd like to see us leveraging the district plans a little bit more around the context and how do we, how do we really think about those unique districts? And what each of those district needs are.
I I think that makes a lot of sense, because then it becomes one place, whether it's council, community or administration. Can go to see, you know, what to anticipate in terms of those future plans for a district.
Yeah. And I just to to counter my colleagues' points, I would say. I'm cautious about relying too much on community leagues for our sole source of engagement. We actually did the public, the council initiative on public engagement that created a world-renowned public engagement policy. And one of the key tenants of that policy is inclusion. And while the community leagues are an important stakeholder, we can't use them as the only stakeholder in a community. So I just want to really flag that as as a comment from me. And then lastly, I just wanted to go back to councillor, so sorry, they left, I should have, I should have led with this one, councillor Wright's questions. On that interplay with sort of the planning division IIS. Because I've been feeling this tension with growth as well. Like, how much new inventory has been developer contributions that were added in 2025? How much is planned to be added in 2026? How are we factoring that into our budget adjustment? How do we know when we're asking developers to do too much and then that costs us on operations? When are they giving enhanced amenities that we then take the burden on without that conversation with operations or IIS? I feel like there's a lot there and I don't feel like we've ever really had that really detailed conversation. So I'm going to go to Ms. Nichols, because you're new and you might be seeing this with new eyes, or your thoughts on that?
Thank you, councillor. I I share the observation and I think even to the point of, yesterday I talked about the city owning 900 facilities. I think that, you know, every day that we're building new things, those come on to our list. And so I think it's absolutely part of the important work of asset management to understand the life cycle of assets, the ones when we get new assets. How we manage them through their lifecycle, but also how we have the discipline to, you know, get to the end of the. Asset lifecycle as well. And so I think that that's really important and in that conversation with developers. And so that work is underway and I think it's part of the total cost of ownership.
Yeah, because I think about like, and just, like in Greaswell, we did these beautiful brick crosswalks. But we have like, I think, one or two people that can actually fix bricks to crosswalks. Right? And that was a contribution that the the Canada Lands did, selling feature, looks really good. But then we take on the liabilities of that.
Maybe I can just add, the way that we're planning for the four-year budget this year will be different than we have in the past. And really looking at our historical data, growth, what does that mean? How do we apply those assumptions to what future growth looks like? We know kind of what our growth is looking like at the time, where that's most likely going to go in the city. What does that mean for new streets, new roads, new houses, all of the things that go with that? And planning holistically on on what does that mean from the total cost of ownership perspective? And then how do we drive that into the the four-year budget and show you exactly what that growth looks like?
Thank you, councillor Clerk.
Thank you. My question kind of goes back to a comment Monday morning, we're at the chamber event with Mr. Mr. Williams and he made a comment and it was something along the lines of, we want to see a city full of renters and not owners, right? So when we look at, when we look at kind of the RS zone and we see, we see all the incentives from the federal government, CMHC loans, how. How powerful those incentives are to build rental properties, right? And this, maybe this is a inherent question, maybe I should know or not, but. I mean, what can we do on a city perspective, from bylaw perspective, to actually encourage ownership versus renters? Do we even have that kind of control or not? Once, once we have it, they can, they can do what they want with it. So just some clarity on that.
Yeah, our zoning bylaw doesn't differentiate tenor. So whether you rent or you own. The zoning law is around the land use and the built form setbacks type of use, but not the user. We don't regulate user.
Councillor Travis, I'll just go one step further. It's not just a zoning bylaw, it's provincial legislation that doesn't allow us to look. At tenure, that's baked into the MGA. So what I would. Look for in terms of land use planning exercises and. Larger overall, looking at that systematic approach is that housing supply. And how that diversity of housing supply is accommodated through our work, whether that's city plan and zoning bylaw or district plans.
Sir, I'm just going to get your time to start. I think we've taken about a minute.
That's all good. I just wanted some clarity.
Oh, that was it?
That's it.
Even easier. Look at that. Four minutes saved. That's efficiency. Councillor Parma.
Hi, normally I don't come for a second round, but this is so riveting, so I wanted to come back. I wanted to talk about unintended consequences of the growth. And so, you know, I look back in 20 years ago and it, and this is all just anecdotal of just door knocking. But Edmonton used to be more affordable than the dough, what I would call the donut communities. So, you know, Fort Saskatchewan, St. Albert. And what I've been seeing lately is actually it's more, it's cheap, it's, they're house for house, lot for lot. It is less. Less expensive to look, to be in the donut than it is into Edmonton. And so I'm wondering if we have any data around out of Edmonton. Like to the donut and reverse, and if that has changed in the past decades.
I'll maybe look to Kent or Travis. I'm not, I'm not sure of the data that we have on this.
I'm not sure of the data either, councillor. I think, I think there is something that we can look to access, but nothing immediately accessible. But but a comment I made earlier to a different question I think is applicable is. It's not always equivalent. Questions or or assessment that we are looking at. So if you are in the region, but you do work within the city, there's transportation costs, there's time costs. So when it, when you look at an equivalent, I would suspect things would look quite differently on the affordability side.
Yeah, that's great. I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, we want to, I would like to see if that is anecdotal or if we actually have trends. Because if people are moving out of Edmonton to. You know, more affordable, let's say, single-family homes or whatever that may be. It causes some challenges from an Edmonton expense perspective or financial increases, that financial gap in terms of not being able to collect. On property taxes or or other. I want to say user fees, but that that's something there. So that's, that's the only thing that I had. I also wanted to ask about the 20 years to develop. Do we actually have data on how long it takes to develop? I know the developments that I've been in, it actually takes like 30 years and they're still not complete, so I'm just questioning if we have any data on that.
Travis, you probably could speak to this more specifically, but yes, we, you know, we, we know when neighborhoods start. But as you were noting earlier, there's definitely that pre-planning work that can take a number of years to do. An area structure plan, a neighborhood structure plan, the servicing agreements, and then get in the ground to dig a hole to build a house. And then the time that it takes to develop over the course of a neighborhood. And so the pace of development of every neighborhood will be slightly different, just given where the market demand might be. We see some neighborhoods finish earlier or later, as you've noted, but Travis, did you want to share more on that?
No, I think you covered it well. There's different timelines, but generally, depending on the size of each of the neighborhoods. And as we've grown over time, our neighborhoods have gotten bigger and bigger. So sometimes they take a little bit longer to absorb all of that supply, as well as just build out that supply as well. It is a large undertaking, not only through the planning system, but the infrastructure and servicing provision as well. And we capture that through our growth monitoring in terms of. Neighborhood percentage buildout in in large parts, whether it's within districts or in larger part quadrants.
Great. And I also want to thank you for that. And I also just want to comment about, you know, the opportunity of this council to be able to have. Two large areas of redevelopment lands and the exhibition lands and Botchford lands. I don't think that in all. I don't think that in all of my time living in Edmonton that I've seen something for this to have, to be able to, I don't know if there's been like a lot of areas that have been redeveloped within the city and that I've seen with great potential. So I'm really looking forward to seeing that too.
Thank you, councillor Wright.
Thank you. I just found it interesting with councillor Palmer talking about how long does it take for it to be complete? I'd like to know what the definition of complete is. Is it just lots sold and houses put up? Or is, and is that something that our substantial completion will define for us? Like what amenities we need to, for those people living there?
Yeah, substantial completion had a set of metrics that we had contemplated. But Kent, I maybe just looking at the growth monitoring, how we identify complete or percentage of complete? Maybe you can speak more on that.
Yeah, councillor Wright, you're, you're absolutely right. There's different definitions. This is a complex subject. We, we talk about affordability and completeness and very complex and definitions and words are important. So when we talk about completeness, just in terms of somebody can get a permit and build a house and have a roof over their head, that is something, something different. And that's a, a really tight timeline in terms of have they built the land development subdivision in accordance with our standards and they've met the service agreement and then we can provide them permits and they can get building home. So then, then that is one definition of complete. We can get, get a home out there. But when we zoom out and look at the block and neighborhood level, that's, there's a different level of completeness. And that, to complete that is not always a developer cost. And that might be a, a rate pair or a city cost. And that could be libraries, that could be our portion of the transportation network or mass transit. And those time scales vary quite dramatically because as we zoom out further and further, a district park completeness for a, a number of neighborhoods. And so the substantial complete, completed, completeness was trying to look at that question of what is the full picture of, of a complete community and provide criteria to guide council's decisions with that. And that piece of work is coming back in early 2027 because the last time we were at council, council gave us some new or different criterias to look at. And I believe some of the components were even looking at school development as well. So lots to look at, but you're, you're absolutely right in terms of neighborhood and, and individual home completeness.
Sorry, you're saying 2027? I thought the items due report shows 2026, Q4.
I think, I think you may have a, a Q4 2026. I may have an updated time schedule that we might be working towards, but it's in that neighborhood.
So what, Q1 2027 then or?
Yeah, we're talking a matter of months difference.
And in that then they'll also, you'll provide those definitions or as to what actually is complete?
Yeah, yeah. Based on what council wanted to have for criteria, last time that report was in front of council, yes, we'll bring that back.
With those definitions?
Yeah, and we, we can share that because council defined that already. But what we'll bring back is an assessment of, of the neighborhoods, of how complete they are based on that criteria.
Okay, look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cat.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, indeed. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the interesting questions raised about growth and regional growth. And so my colleagues raised, I think, an important point about the perception of reality and where investment is going. And I just wonder if we can expand on that a little bit in terms of, we haven't really seen any information on per capita investment development for Edmonton and then for surrounding municipalities. Do we have that information?
I, councillor Pickett, I think that might have been in the presentation on financial sustainability, if I'm not mistaken. But let me just double check that.
Maybe, maybe I misread it. Maybe it's there.
I'm just pulling it up.
Okay, thank you. We're just pulling up the presentation just to confirm, but I think it was in the financial sustainability focus area presentation from, from Monday.
Okay, I'll go back and look at that. And then if, if it doesn't answer my question, I'll get back to you. The other question just like really shifting gears is growth and renewal. When it comes to our new neighborhood renewals, you know, sometimes, you know, for sure, I know that in my ward, there's been some pushback in communities like Overlanders or Homestead or Harris Night on what they feel is an overbuilt version of renewal. And I'm wondering if we can talk about that. Like, how do we review the, the community perception afterwards?
Thank you, councillor. I think some of the after, I would, I would say it's generally not the best time. So I, I would say that we want to review things as we're developing them and, and as we're setting policies. And so I look forward to supporting council on that. But I think listening to, to that experience of people in the city in terms of the newly built infrastructure and testing how well it's working is absolutely important in terms of our continuous improvement. I know there's been work going on around that. And I, and I know that our neighborhood renewal group is having a report coming forward. And I'll get Nicole to comment on the timeline for that.
Yeah, thanks Nicole Wolf, Building Great Neighborhood. So we've got a Q1 slash Q2, I think it's Infrastructure Committee coming, I think, in the first week of April to talk about the policies that are followed by the neighborhood renewal program. So as you're probably aware, at this point in time, the policy dictates that we follow complete streets and a variety of other policies associated to that for a holistic review of traffic safety, safe mobility, as well as future-proofing some of these neighborhoods with a 5% to 10% cost piece associated to that growth work. And we'll be bringing that back here in April for conversation.
And if I could just.
Okay, that's helpful. Oh, please go ahead.
I, I was just noting that Nicole and I have had discussions about the overall cumulative impact on the number of policies we have driving this work. And that's part of the report that's coming.
Okay, that is extremely helpful. I really deeply appreciate that. And then the next question would just be material use in those renewals as we contemplate growth and experience growth. And one of the concerns that I've heard is that while people absolutely appreciate wider sidewalks and things like that, they wonder if maybe we're using, like what metrics we're using that are to determine how much material actually goes into an area. The example I would give is there is a street, I believe it is 137th Avenue. And it got quite a major baselit, but extremely wide sidewalks that sometimes vehicles, people driving vehicles think is a place for them to drive on because it's so wide. I'm just wondering about how we determine how wide to make something.
Just hang on because we'll need a, and you can, thankfully, there's nobody else on the board, but you only left 12 seconds to answer. So what we'll do.
Oh, yeah, no worries.
If you want, you can have, because you've only had one round. If you'd like, you, you're more than welcome to have a second round to get the answer to that question. We don't really have to vote on it. Perfect. Go ahead councillor Pickett. Your, your next five minutes starts now because there's nobody else on the board and we already approved another round. So go ahead.
Okay, so that, yeah, that is the question.
So the, the width of things is dictated by our complete streets guidelines. So sidewalks are meant to be up to 1.8 meters wide based upon accessibility and best standards for the Transportation Association of Canada. That was some recent discussion that we had over the past summer here with build and all of that stuff. The one you may be referencing, and I can honestly say I'm not 100% sure, might be a shared use path. And that's part of our active network and those can be up to three meters. And they are put along collector roads typically to help with the active transportation piece. But they should be signed and I would have to check in the specific details of that one councillor Pickett.
Okay, well, that's helpful. And then the next question would be, when it comes to cul-de-sacs, I, I hear a lot of concern from residents who say, why do we now need a full sidewalk to our cul-de-sac when literally no one ever comes into our Crescent to walk or wheel? Why isn't the status quo okay? And I understand that that's because of our policy. But I'm just wondering how, are we following it extremely dogmatically or is there any room for variance?
So typically with cul-de-sacs, we are putting sidewalks in cul-de-sacs. They are missing links. So when we do get road snow and inability for people to cross appropriately, it is an accessibility and a mobility thing that has gone on. And sometimes we will not be able to put those sidewalks in, but it's typically because of the current design of the width of that cul-de-sac or there may be utilities in there. But the actual implementation of sidewalks in cul-de-sacs is an accessibility and mobility moving forward.
All right, well, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Rutherford, can you take the chair?
Yeah, I have the chair.
Thank you. I think just last question I would ask and as you're creating the four-year budget and this present, this and many of the presentations we've had have contained a lot of valuable information. And thinking about how we make sure we can condense this into, into information that when we're out in the public, especially engaging on the next four-year budget, how we're communicating information like this, especially information in the slides. Have you thought about how we, you know, get that out there? Or is, we, we've got time before we start getting out and engaging. So, so maybe we haven't started building that plan yet, but I'm wondering your thoughts.
We, we have been collecting every comment that has come across from council to admin since we've been doing the focus area conversation. We're distilling that information down every day after our, our sessions. And then we'll be kind of building that plan of attack as we look at the four-year budget and what do we need to be more clear on or what do we need to kind of to move directions on? So that's happening behind the scenes as we speak.
Perfect. So, so there is a thoughtful process underway of how we will ultimately try to communicate that. Okay, it's not just a council during the creation of the four-year budget, but, but get that information out in the hands of the public to, so that they understand, here's the actual impacts of growth. Here's, you know, here's what we're facing. Here's, here are the challenges.
Certainly.
Okay, that's, that's really good to hear. I think that's important. And last question I had, because I meant, I think it was also a question around, I think it's councillor Palmer had asked a question about financial modeling. And I know in the city plan, we had the technical study on the financial modeling. Similarly, maybe similar to my early round of questions, i- if we are going to do an update, we'll actually be able to go in and see how close was that modeling in terms of accuracy? And again, noting that I think the, the financial modeling assumes the full 2 million. And that I think there's a net five or 8% reduction in the, in the tax levy if we actually build out to the city plan. Can we start to get a sense of, of is that materializing or not? Maybe it's materializing quicker because we're already at 44% infill versus what the original plan was, which is maybe a little less. That would be part of that body of work if we're going to be updating the city plan?
Yeah, that's good feedback. And we're thinking about, you know, when and how or what we do in terms of updating that financial assessment. So we'll, we'll take that away and look at how we can better inform and use data to see where we're at.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
I'm there, Nick. I just, it's a nuance, but there's a difference between an 8% reduction in the tax levy and an 8% difference in what it would have been.
Correct.
On its path forward, right?
That's right.
Build as usual versus, so I just, I just.
Yeah, and there, and that's part of the challenge of how you sort of calculate that and think, and, and, and because we're not at 2 million, we don't necessarily know how much of that has, is a result of what's happened to date or if you won't start to see some of that till later on because you're not building as many kilometers as roadway as you would have originally planned if, without the city plan. And so you might not start seeing the impact of that till later on. So all just really interesting discussion. Okay, those are all my questions. I'll take back the chair. I've got the chair back. And I, that's it. There's nobody else on the board. So that covers item 7.5. And now we're going to our last item of business for this orientation meeting, which is item 7.4, the advancing safety and security focus area. So we'll change out the delegation.
Okay. It has been a journey and I'm happy to say that this is the fifth and final focus area, advancing safety and security. So this critical priority for council administration and every Edmontonian. We will share the strategic approach and, and integrated efforts we are mobilizing in this area. More importantly, this session is designed to gather your vision and expectations for this critical work. Before we dive in, I just want to set the stage for how we've structured today's presentation. We'll set the foundations, then dig into the challenges and most importantly, consider the solutions and then how we work together. First, we will start with our commitment to our own people. We orientate you to the preparation and safety among our workforce and share an overview of our citywide approach for managing safety risks and our for, and, and our focus on safety program governance and prevention through our core audit performance program. Next, we will spend some time sharing back to you what we heard in the listening sessions about safety in our communities and wards and across the city. We will, we will also share our insights from Edmontonians about their perception of safety living in our city. This will be the foundation for our discussion about understanding and measuring safety as we know safety is complex and means something different to everyone. Then we'll spend the bulk of our time together on challenges and solutions for safety and security in our city and the collaboration and partnerships that are necessary to make sustained and meaningful progress. We will end this presentation giving you a heads up about how you can expect to hear more about this work and our opportunities to work together on a path forward. We know that today is just the beginning of the safety and security conversation, but we'll have a number of touchpoints on this work during your term. Safety and security is one of our five core focus areas and is inherently linked to all others. Just as you heard during your engagements with constituents, whether from residents, business owners or industry leaders, we all, we also recognize the importance of safe and secure and, a safe and secure environment and how the concept manifests itself through sustaining high or sustaining a high quality of life for Edmontonians, ensuring the efficient delivery of our city services, supporting every other strategic goal from economic growth to financial stability and the fundamental aspiration that answers the question, is Edmonton a safe city? And, and for us, that needs to be a resounding yes. Supporting safety and security will provide benefits for Edmontonians by fostering communities where all residents feel safe and secure to live, work, and play, strengthening the social fabric by promoting a strong sense of community belonging and reducing social costs associated with crisis response, crime, and disorder, leading to a higher overall quality of life and building public trust that city services and spaces are safe, welcoming and accessible for all of those who, all of those with confidence. For the organization, this focus will support us in positively impacting employee engagement, productivity, and staff retention by demonstrating care through the safe and supportive work environment, achieving significant operational and fiscal advantages through a healthier and more committed workforce and ensuring the security of the city, of city assets to maintain efficient delivery of service. So let's review the distinct roles in achieving safety and security. City council focuses on the strategic rules and limits from a governance perspective. The role of council is to set strategic direction for community and workplace safety, allocate funding for immediate and long-term safety priorities, champion. allocate funding for immediate and long-term safety priorities, champion collaboration with community partners, advocate for action from the other orders of government, and approve policy and bylaws. Administration takes direct operational, a direct operational perspective focusing on execution and stewardship. Uh we must develop and implement the safety and security strategies and plans, collaborate with partners to deliver services and programs, maintain safe and supportive work environments for all staff, enforce uh enforce response and uh prevention protocols for uncivil or unsafe behavior. Working together, count, sorry, working together, council administration will achieve four common objectives, ensuring Edmontonians are safe and secure through collaborative coordinated approaches and address um both immediate and long-term needs, fostering safe, supportive, and respectful workplaces where all employees feel protected and valued, strengthen partnerships and shared accountability with community agencies, enforcement bodies, and other levels of government, and addressing complex safety challenges sustainably and effectively. Achieving safety and security as a core focus area means ensuring that uh ensuring a comprehensive dual-focused approach that covers both the community and organization. We focus on two key outcomes. Outcome number one, Edmontonians are safe and secure in our community. This is about creating secure environment for all residents to live, work, and play, addressing challenges with both immediate action and long-term planning. Uh the city working along, working collaboratively with partners and community to address complex safety and security challenges. We ensure that the appropriate resources are in place and managed to respond to immediate safety concerns uh and crisis. And our focus includes developing strategies for long-term prevention to reduce the cause of disorder and improve all overall community resilience. And the second outcome, staffer are supported in in their work environments ensures that the city's internal operations maintain the high standard of work, safety and support for all employees, which in turn enables effective service delivery. The city has a robust response and prevention or response and prevention plans to address uncivil and unwelcome behavior that uh may originate from public or within the workplace, controls the processes in place uh to ensure all work environments are safe and secure and that staff feel protected and valued. And we are committed to ensuring sa- staff are safe and supported in their work environments, which strengthens our ability to serve the public. I'm now going to pass it over to Dennis, Jen, and Craig to walk through the rest of the focus area.
Thank you, Eddie. I'd like to speak about the foundation and operational enabler to this focus area. Workforce safety and employee supports. Our commitment to resilient committee safety begins with protecting the people who deliver the deliver the services and create safe and healthy workspaces. We must secure our employees' wellbeing and provide appropriate supports to ensure that they continue to deliver the integrated solutions we require. Next slide. The employee check-in surveys you heard about in their previous council orientation presentation provides valuable information to our leaders in understanding how their employees are doing and identifying opportunities for improvement. In the April twenty twenty-five employee check-in, employee satisfaction increased by four points since May twenty twenty-four with scores of twelve of the thirteen remaining questions showing improvement and one remaining stable. For this discussion, we'll focus on the wellness-related questions and results, as this gives us insight into how our employees are doing overall and how they are experiencing the workplace. Next slide. At the city of Edmonton, we worked to foster a workplace environment where safety, inclusion, and wellbeing are integrated so that every employee is empowered to deliver their best. We are encouraged that in the most recent employee check-in survey, employees' responses to feeling supported, safe, and respected in the workplace are trending upwards. We're always striving to improve in some of these key, and there are some key actions that we've taken so far, which include we've removed the cap on counseling sessions with our employee and family assistance program provider. This intentional promotion to employees has resulted in a six point nine percent increase in utilization. This was done in response to feedback shared by in previous employee check-in surveys. We've also launched a new service called the Trauma Response Team in early twenty twenty-five. The TRT fosters a supportive culture for people and dedication to resilient workplace by providing integrated, timely, and empathetic support to city of Edmonton employees experiencing critical incident trauma. Another highlight this year included the successful completion of our of our occupational health and safety audit in March of twenty twenty-five, followed by the renewal of our Certificate of Recognition Core in addition to three years uh for an additional three years and our recent core audit performance process leadership review for the twenty-three to twenty-five CAP cycle. We will touch more on this in the next slides. Our CAP program and our strategic shift from compliance to proactive loss prevention are how we operationally deliver our common objective, which is to foster safe, support, and respectful workplaces. Our workforce safety and employee health branch managers monitors and continuously improves on the safety of employee health management system in support of our business partners and leaders across the organization. The Health, Safety, and Wellness and Environment Steering Committee enables strategic oversight and a number of departments, divisions, branches, and sections. Frontline Health and Safety Committees help to operationalize and implement health and safety initiatives throughout the city. Next slide. The workforce safety and employee health branch is currently undergoing a strategic transformation to move towards proactive risk prevention and employee protection. Our fundamental mission is to demonstrate and enable the highest level of care for employees protecting their life, health, and property, which directly supports the outcomes of advancing our safety and security across our community. We achieve this by setting citywide's safety standards and offering technical expertise and programs to keep the entire organization compliant and safe. Our frontline occupational health and safety teams are also embedded right in the business areas to provide real-time hands-on support. They are there for occupational health and safety emergencies, to help identify and control hazards daily, and champion a culture where wellbeing and psychological safety are paramount. Ultimately, our goal is to ensure that all staff who serve Edmontonians are safe and supported in their work environments. Next slide. We recently renewed our certificate of recognition for three years after passing our occupational health and safety audit. This success is managed through our established CAP or Core Audit Performance Process. For years, CAP is successfully driven and continuous improvement cycle and ensured or organizational compliance, acting as our benchmark for meeting safety standards. We are now transitioning into CAP two point O, and this is a significant strategic evolution that moves us beyond compliance. Our core focus is now shifting to proactive risk management and loss prevention with an emphasis on addressing the organizational, the organization's highest risks. This work is essential for ensuring safety and health and are for ensuring a safe and healthy environment for employees and visitors. Next slide. The new CAP two point O utilizes the existing CAP process, but introduces two new critical focus areas. Safety and security is the first to ensure all work environments in front-facing employees are protected from uncivil public behavior. And two, high-energy hazards. This strategy is no longer about risk avoidance. It is embedding a strategic proactive management mindset. This enables leaders to properly scope, manage, and and resource solutions specifically to the highest organizational risks. CAP two point O is one mechanism we will use on our road to loss prevention. We know there's an important connection between our workforce and the ability to provide excellent service to our public facing, our public facilities and spaces. With that, I'll hand it back to, I'll hand it over to Jen to dig into what we know about safety and security in our city and what we've heard from you and your time in the communities and at the doors of Edmontonians. Jen?
Thanks, Dennis. Transitioning from our internal workforce, we now turn our focus outward to the community we serve. It's important to emphasize that we ground our work in the lived experience of Edmontonians. This section, what we are hearing, is the foundation of this focus area, and it validates that the challenges we are prioritizing are the same ones keeping residents, you, me, us, up at night. So what are Edmontonians telling us? You have recently spent hundreds of hours listening to residents, and what you've shared with us is a clear, consistent, and urgent diagnosis of the problem. We've heard you talk about crime and security. Residents are worried about chronic property crimes such as theft, break-ins, shoplifting, vandalism, and not feeling safe in their own neighborhoods or in public spaces like downtown. We've heard you talk about transit and facility safety. We hear concerns about safety in public facilities like transit centers and libraries that are strained by incidences of social disorder. We've heard you talk about disorder and root causes. Edmontonians are talking about persistent struggles with problem properties and encampments and witnessing too many folks suffering from mental health and addiction issues. We've heard you talk about traffic and road safety. Beyond crime and disorder, there are increasing concerns about unsafe behavior of drivers speeding and cutting through communities. And we've also heard you talk about perception. The bottom line is, we know that perception is reality, and we've got work to do. Before we even discuss our safety and security challenges and solutions, we need to have a shared understanding of what safety is. For a long time, safety was measured by a single metric, the crime rate. If the numbers went down, the job was considered done. But what are we hearing from the public does tell us a different story. We are currently seeing some of the lowest crime rates in a decade, yet the perception of safety remains stagnant. This gap tells us that our traditional definitions may be too narrow. In this next section, we are going to unpack the city's broader framework for safety. To respond to the complex safety and security challenges, we need discipline and an awareness of the interconnectedness of multiple factors. This is where community safety and wellbeing guides us. Council approved this work in twenty twenty-two to move us beyond short-term fixes and towards a long-term system-wide approach. It remains our north star, ensuring that every investment we make is driving towards the same goal, that each person makes Edmonton home feels a sense of purpose, safety, and stability. As you know, the framework is built on seven pillars, and while today we are laser-focused on specific operational outcomes, it is important to see how they fit into this bigger picture. Everything rests on anti-racism, reconciliation, and equitable policies. These are the lenses through which we design safety solutions to ensure we don't inadvertently cause further harm to disproportionately affected communities. We address the upstream drivers through wellbeing and pathways in and out of poverty. And finally, the pillars most pertinent to today's conversation are safe and inclusive spaces and crime prevention and crisis intervention. This is where our immediate challenges are and where we are directing significant energy. We are using this framework to stay disciplined. We are not trying to do everything everywhere all at once. Instead, we are using these pillars to target our efforts where the needs are highest and the data is clearest. And we are doing so with special care and intention for those feeling the highest perception of insecurity and those at the highest risk of disproportionate harm. The CSWB framework ties this work together, but the various solutions and strategies we are soon to discuss are how we operationalize it and put this philosophy into action. We recognize that safety is multi-dimensional. First, there's physical safety, the traditional definition, the absence of crime, violence, or physical harm. Then there is social and psychological safety. This asks, do you feel safe and welcome in public spaces? A socially safe setting is one in which we feel secure and free to be ourselves. And finally, there is cultural safety. This asks, do you feel respected and free from discrimination when accessing services? Cultural safety means that all people feel respected and safe when they interact with systems. Since safety is multi-dimensional, we cannot rely on a single metric to tell us if we are succeeding. To get our arms around the situation, we need to track three distinct categories of data. First, we have the traditional metrics. This is the area most people associate with safety, police data, crime rates, and victimization. This information gives us the necessary objective reality of enforcement and incident volume. While crucial for immediate responses, this dimension often just shows us the symptoms of deeper problems. It tells us what happened, but not why. Second, we measure public perception. This measures people's feeling of public safety and their trust in how we are responding to their concerns. As I mentioned earlier, even if crime rates drop, if the feeling of safety doesn't improve, we haven't succeeded. Our interventions must respond to Edmontonians' lived experience, not just the raw numbers. Third, community resilience. This is the most critical long-term dimension. We measure things like neighborhood wellness, civic participation, and community mobilization. Because the most effective way to foster safety and prevent crime is to invest in the wellbeing of residents and community resilience. This metric acknowledges that safety is also the presence of protective factors, not just the absence of harm. We know that answering the question, is Edmonton a safe city, requires more than just quoting crime statistics. It requires balancing all three of these metrics. That's why the city of Edmonton is leading the way in a national conversation on how cities can better understand these metrics as they relate to one another and across Canadian municipalities through the urban safety monitoring initiative. This work is helping to shape the strategies that will continue to guide safety and security solutions in our city moving forward. So let's start with the traditional metrics. The headline here is significant. This year marks Edmonton's lowest crime rate in a decade. To really understand the significance of that, we have to look at how much Edmonton has grown. As you know, Edmonton has grown significantly in recent years, sixteen percent population growth between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four. In real numbers, that means over one hundred and sixty-three thousand people moved to Edmonton during that timeframe. And yet, our crime rate, which measures incidents per capita, has actually dropped. The statistics show a six percent reduction in Edmonton's total crime rate from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. The following information referenced in the remainder of this slide is from the publicly available twenty twenty-four EPS annual report and the twenty twenty-four year-end crime analysis EPS news release. These statistics show an overall five percent reduction in Edmonton's Total Crime Severity Index, or CSI, which measures the volume and severity of crime. Most critically, the violent CSI saw a ten percent decrease compared to twenty twenty-three levels. Edmonton's violent crime rate is now lower than both the national and provincial averages. A major factor here is the shift towards proactive work. Despite a five percent, five point one percent increase in total calls for service this past year, the breakdown tells the real story. Public-generated calls increased by only one point four percent, while member-generated calls increased by thirty-four point one percent. This means that members were increasingly intervening in crime before it became a public complaint or escalated further. And it shows that our targeted initiatives like the Guns and Gang Strategy and the city EPS deployment partnerships on transit are working. In fact, the transit partnership led to a six percent decrease in crime severity in transit areas specifically. This operational success is backed by public support. In twenty twenty-four, residents reported, sixty-eight percent of them, that they support how the police usually act. Even more importantly, as enforcement strives for cultural safety, the EPS saw seventy-three percent support among people of color. We also know that the visibility of uniformed officers drives the feeling of safety. Sixty percent of their monthly survey respondents said seeing police in the neighborhood made them feel safer. However, this brings us to the tension we are managing. While crime is down, the demand for presence is outpacing capacity. Over fifty percent of residents said the number of police they see in their neighborhood is too low. Why? Because while criminal, while criminal code violations are dropping, social disorder calls are rising. Calls for trouble with person, encampment complaints, trespassing, and welfare checks have all been increasing year over year since twenty twenty. This is the reality of the ecosystem. Police and peace officers are managing a massive volume of social disorder calls. This disorder, not traditional crime, is where the perception of safety is being impacted. So we just looked at the objective reality of crime statistics. Now we need to measure the lived reality of Edmontonians. This brings us to our second dimension of measurement, public perception. While traditional metrics tell us the volume and severity of incidents, this metric tells us if our residents actually feel secure enough to live their lives fully. In the latest Service Satisfaction Survey, fifty-four percent of Edmontonians agree with the statement that overall, I feel Edmonton is a safe city. While this is a statistically significant increase of six points from twenty twenty-four, we want to continue to see this number climb. Crucially, this feeling of safety is not shared equally. The average does obscure some disparities. So while fifty-four percent of the general population say they feel safe, that number does shift. So for racialized groups, it drops to thirty-six percent. For parents with children, it is thirty-nine percent, and for indigenous peoples, twenty-two percent. This data is the proof of the disproportionate disproportionate harm we discussed earlier with the CSWB framework. The public view community safety as a high-stakes issue. While eighty-eight percent state that community safety is important to them, only thirty-nine percent are currently satisfied with the service. The gap between expectation and reality is wide. So what is specifically driving this pervasive low sense of safety? The public has told us directly through the Service Satisfaction Survey. For those who strongly disagreed with this statement, overall, I feel Edmonton is a safe city, over half mentioned the visible public distress related to homelessness and or substance use in our public spaces. Now, we are careful not to criminalize poverty, but to state clearly that the Now, we are careful not to criminalise poverty, but to state clearly that the presence of struggling individuals, be it overdoses, encampments, open drug use, is the number one contributor to dissatisfaction with safety in Edmonton, as reported by residents. Other drivers involve the functional loss of our public spaces. Nearly 40% mentioned public safety issues left unaddressed. Roughly a third mentioned transit and LRT safety, specifically citing fears about harassment, drug use or a lack of security presence. About 20% cited poor police presence or insufficient visible presence. Property crime, an issue cited by roughly 10%, is the tangible sign of disorder that directly erodes neighbourhood resilience. The consequence is that when Edmontonians do not feel safe, this causes them to withdraw from public spaces and community interaction. This then further weakens our community's resilience and ability to keep shared spaces safe and welcoming without relying on formal enforcement. The final dimension of measuring safety is community resilience. While the first two dimensions tell us what is happening today, this dimension tells us about what might happen tomorrow. It measures the capacity of a community to absorb crisis without sliding into disorder, violence and harm. To measure this capacity effectively, as I mentioned earlier in this presentation, administration is adopting the Community Urban Safety Monitoring Tool. And this tool will allow us to track the indicators you see on the screen, such as neighbourhood wellness, civic participation and community health. We measure two sides of the coin. Risk factors, which are conditions that increase the likelihood of crime, violence and disorder, and protective factors, which are conditions that show cohesion and stability. While we're finalizing the specific data sets with our partners, we're looking at indicators such as high school graduation rates, sense of belonging, proximity to services and experiences of discrimination. By consistently monitoring the health of these indicators, we ensure our investments are not just reactive, but are strategically building long-term strength. We have defined what safety means and we've looked at how we measure it, but data without action does not build public trust. Our analysis of the metrics combined with what we heard from Edmontonians has converged to identify four specific challenges where safety is most at risk. Over the next section, we will take you through these four challenges one by one. For each challenge, whether it is visible homelessness, transit, violence or neighbourhood disorder, we will first define the reality using the data and then immediately present the specific city-led solutions we are deploying to address it. The first and most visible challenge we face is the crisis of visible homelessness and distress. Before we look at our local numbers, we must be clear, this is not a challenge unique to Edmonton. Municipalities across Canada are experiencing this exact same breaking point. In fact, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities has formally declared homelessness as a national crisis that is outpacing local resources. The Ontario Big City Mayors launched the Solve the Crisis campaign, stating plainly that municipalities cannot manage this humanitarian crisis on the property tax base alone. Closer to home, Alberta municipalities passed resolutions calling for a provincial emergency shelter strategy, recognising that this pressure is being felt from Grand Prairie to Lethbridge. With that context, let's look at the reality in Edmonton. We rely on Homeward Trusts by Name list, which is not a point-in-time count of homelessness, but rather a real-time operational list of specific individuals experiencing chronic homelessness who have requested help. Over 50 sector partners contribute to this live dataset, including emergency shelters, outreach teams and specialised service providers. The scale of the challenge is that, as of last week, there are 4,697 people on this list, of which about 2,750 are provisionally housed. The number that likely drives the public perception of disorder is the approximate 1,866 people who are currently reporting that they are sleeping in emergency shelters or are unsheltered on our streets. Many of these individuals have a disproportionate representation of complex health needs that is further exacerbated by the drug overdose crisis. While not every person experiencing homelessness uses substances, those living rough are disproportionately vulnerable. Edmonton consistently records the highest number of EMS response to opioid events among Alberta municipalities. To give you an example of this pressure, by May 6th of this year, our fire rescue services had already administered more naloxone than they did in the entirety of the previous year. While overdoses happen in private homes as well, it is the public medical emergencies on our streets and in transit stations that residents see. And this creates a cycle of vulnerability. The Edmontonians who are currently sleeping in shelters or unsheltered on the streets are arguably the people who are the most unsafe in our city. Yet, it is their presence that is often cited as the primary reason that other residents feel unsafe. This is our first challenge, when health, housing and justice systems are insufficient or strained and the fallout lands in our public spaces. To address the challenge of homelessness and public distress, we are executing on several integrated council-approved plans. First, we're addressing the root cause through our affordable housing strategy and its complementary plans. In fact, just today, the city of Edmonton has launched its eighth round of the Affordable Housing Investment Programme, which has helped build 2,473 units of affordable housing since 2019. The city's approach as an early investor has helped attract $852 million from other orders of governments and housing partners and created homes across the affordable housing spectrum from near-market rentals to social and supportive housing. Other plans and current work include the Affordable Housing Investment Plan is how we build. By providing predictable land and funding to attract partners, we have already successfully increased Edmonton's non-market housing supply by 30% since 2019, including 900 units of supportive housing. The Homelessness and Housing Services Plan is how we support people. It articulates how the city is working to prevent, resolve and improve emergency response to homelessness. In 2024, we invested millions in prevention and resolution activities like tenant supports and rehousing individuals at risk of homelessness in problem properties. And further significant investments were made to address immediate crisis response, such as encampments and crisis diversion. Secondly, we are tackling the health crisis playing out on our streets through the Drug Poisoning Reduction Advocacy and Action Plan. While healthcare is a provincial jurisdiction, the impact is municipal. And so this plan moves us to active coordination through 36 specific recommendations under five key focus areas. Convening and coordination, data sharing and information, funding support, strategic direction and alignment, advocacy and collaboration. We continue to work with other orders of government, primary preventative health services, Recovery Alberta and local agencies to increase awareness of the overdose crisis, improve coordination and develop pathways to recovery that will ultimately save the lives of Edmontonians who may be using substances or experiencing addiction. I'll hand it over to Craig.
So this brings us to our second challenge, which is transit safety. So we discussed the broad reality of visible homelessness and drug use in our public spaces. And now we need to look at how some of those factors are concentrating themselves within the specific confined environments of our transit network. The good news is, with council and our partners like Edmonton Police Services and social agencies, we've made critical investments in security measures over the last few years, and those are paying off. We fully recovered our transit ridership in early 2023. And so for context, other large cities like Vancouver, Toronto and Montreal, they're not quite there yet. As of October 2025, so just the last month of, like the last full month we've had, our ridership is up 16% compared to pre-pandemic levels. And that's in part because of our investments in safety and security. But while ridership is up, we know people don't always feel safe and perceive that they're in a safe environment when using transit, particularly in the off-peak times and on weekends when ridership is lower. And similar to the previous challenge, this is a national trend and it's not unique to Edmonton. And so I think many of us saw the recent media coverage on that this morning, which really reinforces that this is a national issue. And our actions have aligned with QDAS, which is Canadian Urban Transit Association's national recommendations for safety and security, and we do have a strategic action plan. People want to be safe and feel safe when using transit. And this matters because transit is a connector to jobs and training. Safety on the network builds confidence among investors and business owners, directly enhancing our economy. So for perspective, October 2025, the frequency of safety and security disorder incidents are 0.06% of more than 5.3 million completed trips in that month. However, 61% of riders are satisfied with their safety. So this has remained stable over the past two years despite declining crime and security disorders and despite record levels of ridership. So we've been digging into this over the summer and the fall to better understand why perceptions are not improving. And similar to the last challenge, we've heard three main things. Presence of houseless people in transit spaces, drug use in transit spaces and media reports, including social media and personal stories of security incidents. So to address this, we take a multi-layer approach to safety that includes transit peace officers, collaborations, the emergency phones and buttons, transit watchline, joint deployments with EPS and monitoring of cameras throughout our system. At the end of 2024, we had close to 100 FTEs of frontline TPOs and there's more on the way. But the challenge is, while we've been adding more TPOs, the number of dispatched events, things like disorder, medical calls, checks on welfare, that's been rising faster. In 2024, this team was dispatched to over 69,000 events, a significant jump from 48,000 two years prior. So at this trajectory, we anticipate that reactive events will exceed the transit peace officer capacity as early as 2028. So the picture is, we have more riders, enforcement resources that keep them safe are under strain, and this strain influences riders' perception of safety. So to respond to some of these challenges, we're confronting the issue from a few different angles simultaneously. First, we're addressing the immediate gap through our joint deployment models. Since quarter one of 2025, we've broken down some silos between TPOs and EPS. Our transit peace officers are now operating under a unified command model, targeting jointly managed hotspots. And the teams have a clear mission, and that's to maintain visibility, address unlawful behaviour and conduct fair inspections. The data is showing this model is working. The last 90-day report indicates that public-generated calls for service has declined by 11%, while officer-generated calls increased by 290%. This confirms that our officers are proactively intervening before a rider has to call for help. Second, we know we can't enforce our way out of the challenge. This is where community outreach transit teams and other social supports are critical. Since September of 2021, we've deployed transit peace officers alongside community support workers from Bentero Traditional Healing Society, and this is part of our balanced approach. We stabilise the transit space while also connecting vulnerable individuals to the supports they actually need, like housing, mental health support, substance recovery and financial assistance. Complementing our community outreach transit teams or COT, our checks on welfare from the transit peace officers as well. So this year alone, TPOs, transit peace officers, conducted nearly 12,000 checks and can provide medical aid, naloxone and resource information. So we are focused on that rider experience and the environment, which also helps increase ridership and that related natural surveillance. We prioritise the basics, enhanced cleaning, maintenance to ensure the space feels cared for and reminding riders of safety tools like Transit Watch and the emergency phones. We also successfully ran the Here to Help campaign in September. There's going to be a memo to council that'll be sent out here quite shortly with the results. And what that does is reinforce to riders that support is available and visible. We're also incorporating the results of the Oracle Project, which is in which we conducted 46 station activations and we collected hundreds of stories from transit riders to better understand their experience of wellbeing to inform future opportunities for rider engagement and actions that can support stronger feelings of interpersonal connectedness in transit spaces. So now I'll pass it back to Jen for the third challenge.
Thank you. We have discussed disorder on our streets and in our transit system. Now we turn to a fear for many residents, the risk of violence. As we noted earlier, the Violent Crime Severity Index is actually lower now than it was five years ago. Yet, crime and safety remain a top priority in our surveys. This tells us that while enforcement is working, the conditions that create violence are still visible and top of mind for Edmontonians. Violence is the intentional use of physical, emotional, psychological and sexual force or power, threatened or actual. It includes physical, emotional, psychological or sexual harm, and also the trauma that lingers in a family or community long after an incident is over. To address this fear, we must look at the risk factors. These are the ingredients that increase the likelihood of violence occurring. As you can see on the screen, these factors are interconnected. Individual risks, issues like substance use, mental health challenges or having experienced or witnessed trauma. Community risks, factors such as concentrated poverty, high unemployment, income inequality and poor community design. And societal risks, broad structural issues like oppression, discrimination and deep-seated inequalities related to race and gender. Finally, we must acknowledge that violence is typically not random and it takes an inequitable toll. It concentrates in communities experiencing poverty and disproportionately targets Indigenous peoples, women and racialised groups. The more risk factors a person or community is exposed to, the higher their risk of violence. Therefore, our solution must reduce these risks before the violence happens. To effectively tackle the complex issue, the city has adopted an approach rooted in the fact that violence is predictable and therefore it is preventable, especially through robust, multi-sectoral collaboration. The Blueprint for Violence Prevention takes a public health approach, which includes four key steps. First, identifying and defining the problem. Identifying underlying risks and protective factors that can explain why some individual or communities experience different levels of violence. Adopting and evaluating interventions that tackle those underlying factors. And then widely implementing what works. This approach to violence prevention has shown success in many jurisdictions around the world, including Scotland, Philadelphia, Boston and Green Bay. Since council approved this plan, we've been busy executing on three clear goals. First, we are building this governance structure to drive action. We've launched the Violence Reduction Network, a coordinating body that brings together the city, police and health systems. Instead of working in silos, this network aligns our efforts to ensure we are pulling in the same strategic direction. Secondly, we are preventing violence now. This includes tailored immediate interventions. We're leveraging partnerships like the Neighbourhood Empowerment Team, or NET, with the Edmonton Police Service to de-escalate community conflict. We are using crime prevention through environmental design or SEPTED to physically change our environments, improving lighting and sightlines to remove opportunities for crime. Third, we are moving upstream to cut off the supply of risk factors. In our first year, we have deployed significant investments directly into the community. The Blueprint for Violence Prevention Grant Programme is funding frontline initiatives like youth leadership and skills development that are proven to build resilience and keep people out of the justice system. I want to pivot now to the final challenge issued to us by Edmontonians. Disorder in our neighbourhoods and community spaces. We need to continue to take a human-centred approach to the data you see on the screen. What is the experience of a resident living in their neighbourhood? When I walk my dog, do I worry about the speed of the cars on my street? When I take my children to the library, is the environment welcoming? When I go to a park or a playground, is it clean? If the answer to these questions is fear or hesitation, then we have not met our goal. The statistics on the slide are visible signals of what Edmontonians are telling us. They are indicators of neighbourhood health and community vitality. This disorder creates a cumulative burden on residents. It isn't just one thing, it's the combination of all the things. On our roads, we're seeing a tangible rise in physical danger. Since 2019, provincial changes narrowed our ability to use automated traffic enforcement. Speeding violations of 20 kilometres an hour over the limit have spiked. Rising fatalities and aggressive driving mean that residents feel unsafe on their own streets and sidewalks. At EPL and our recreation centres, staff are managing higher intensity events. Safety incidents in our community recreation cultures climbed to 6,302 incidences in 2024. That's a 40% increase since 2019. In CRC, we've had to make $7.5 million in unbudgeted investments over the last year for emergency access controls and security upgrades. And security costs at EPL are up 164%. We are now spending library funds on security guards just to maintain a baseline of safety so these spaces remain accessible. Ultimately, the risk we face is community withdrawal. When residents encounter graffiti, aggressive driving and disorder, they stop using public spaces, instead they stay home. And this creates a cycle where our community hubs become underutilised, weakening the vitality we are trying to build. To answer the challenge of disorder in our neighbourhoods, our solution is defined by this statement. Committed presence and reliable response. We are deploying resources to restore order and confidence across several fronts. And this deployment continues to be data-informed and shared with our partners. In fact, the city of Edmonton has been recognised for its leadership in developing and sharing Unison, a tool that uses AI to map data from safety incident reports to predict where responses will be needed and inform what those responses should be. We continue to target the visible signs of decline that make our neighbourhood feel unsafe. Our Problem Properties Initiative targets high-risk residences that destabilise entire blocks. We hold owners accountable to reduce the demand for repeated enforcement. Through Capital City Cleanup, we are empowering communities to tackle graffiti and litter with us. We know that a well-maintained space feels safer, so we are stewarding our parks and pathways to keep them clean and maintained. We are encouraging safer behaviour through our uniformed staff and joint operations. We rely on our peace officers and municipal enforcement officers to be the visible presence that enforce the rules. To address the risky driving we discussed, we use a mix of engineering and enforcement. This includes Project Tensor, our joint operation with EPS that targets the noise and speeding that frustrates residents. And our Community Safety Liaison, partnered with businesses, residents, community groups and enforcement partners to address the concerns they are hearing from Edmontonians. They offer practical resources and support safety projects that build the capacity of Edmontonians to contribute to safer neighbourhoods and communities. And all of these resources are available to anyone online. Finally, our response includes mobilizing resources when tragedy or conflict occurs. After a crisis, we deploy our Community After Incident Response, or CARE. This provides immediate, trauma-informed mental health support to prevent a crisis from becoming a permanent scar on the neighbourhood. To address one aspect of disorder in our facilities, we are introducing the Welcome Back Programme. And instead of just banning youth, we use a restorative justice circle process to repair harm and reduce the risk of recidivism. From cleaning up graffiti to deploying peace officers to supporting a neighbourhood after a tragedy, this is an integrated operational response designed to restore confidence in our community spaces. We've just walked through four specific challenges and the city's direct operational action plans to address them. But we need to be realistic. The city cannot enforce its way out of systemic social issues that impact actual safety and perceptions of safety. This next section is about the missing puzzle piece of public safety. It's about two critical things. First, the ecosystem of players and partners. We need to be clear about who holds the levers and the resources. So we will map out where the city fits alongside the province, the police, and the community. Second, the necessity of prevention. We know that intervention is expensive and reactive. True collaboration allows us to work upstream before that 211, or 311, or 911 call is made. This is where our partnerships yield the highest return of investment for Edmontonians. To move from shared problems to shared solutions, we first need to map out exactly who does what. This is the ecosystem of safety. It starts with our partners and other orders of government. The Government of Canada is a key capital funder and legislator. They provide critical capital investment for housing. They also provide funding through Public Safety Canada and set the Criminal Code that defines the laws we enforce. The Government of Alberta holds the keys to addressing the structural causes of our safety issues. They legislate and fund the four systems that create our biggest pressures, those being housing, mental health, addiction, and justice. Gaps in these systems directly cause the visible disorder we manage on our streets, transit system, and in our community spaces. They're also our key partner. The province contributes 80% of our highly-leveraged FCSS funding. This partnership is essential for reducing future social costs caused by violence, crime, and disorder. The city is the only entity with a mandate to manage the entire safety spectrum. And our strength lies in our role as advocate, convener, funder, and service provider. Council provides the essential governance perspective. Your role is to help us set the strategy, champion collaboration, allocate funding for priorities, approve policy, and advocate for action from other orders of government. Administration will provide the operational perspective and wear the boots on the ground, responsible for outcomes. We develop and implement the plans, like the Blueprint for Violence Prevention and Safe Mobility Strategy. We deploy frontline staff for reliable response and manage the social infrastructure like libraries, parks, and rec centres that build that resilience. We ensure that grant funding and staff time are focused on clear, aligned goals with our external partners. EPS is our designated partner for addressing criminal code violations and providing the deepest enforcement authority. Governed by the Police Act, EPS has the necessary authority to investigate crime and address the risks of violence. EPS works alongside our peace officers in joint deployments to address the complex issues on our transit system and in our core neighbourhoods. Their work is essential for improving the traditional crime rate metrics. Our nonprofit and community partners are the mobilizers and frontline supports. They represent the community-driven and trauma-informed approach that is central to our framework. Reach Edmonton is a strategic partner that helps mobilize and coordinate organizations to prevent violence and find community-based solutions. And other organizations deliver the vast majority of prevention and intervention services from mental health to child and youth development. Finally, our residents are the active participants. They are co-producers of safety, and their engagement and experience is the measure of our success. Their feedback captured in the Perception of Safety data tells us where our approach is succeeding and where we must redouble our efforts, particularly around visible disorder. When these roles are aligned, we do our most impactful work. We just mapped out the players in the safety and security ecosystem. Now let's talk about the most powerful play this ecosystem can run: prevention. Prevention is the proactive effort applied before crime, victimization, or severe harm has occurred. It is the highest-returning strategic investment we can make, focused on building protective factors and resiliency for individuals, families, and communities. First, let's frame this through the lens of cost and shared financial responsibility. The latest research indicates the total social and economic cost of crime in Canada reaches approximately $145 billion annually. That is the cost of inaction. Prevention flips this equation. We know that highly-targeted, evidence-based programs yield a high return on investment. For example, specific life skills training programs have a proven cost-benefit ratio as high as $32 saved for every dollar spent. Or for every dollar invested in EPL, you'll see a return of $3.11, saving Edmontonians $131 million annually. This is where the shared accountability of the ecosystem becomes real money. One of our most critical partnerships for prevention is that family and community support services are the FCSS programme. As mentioned, the GOA contributes 80% of that cost. This means our municipal tax dollars are highly leveraged. We use this funding to invest in programs that strengthen protective factors like positive mental health and healthy relationships. But funding isn't enough, we need execution. As a service provider, we also deliver prevention effectively through our partnerships. A prime example is with our Community Recreation and Culture Branch, with their youth after-school programming. By collaborating with not-for-profit agencies, this initiative provides free, structured programs that build social connectedness and positive development for youth during high-risk hours. The excellence of this partnership was also recently recognized with an Alberta Recreation and Parks Association. This is the inclusion award for the NiKaneeo Indigenous Youth Leadership Programme. The city's Tenant Support Programme is another great example of providing much-needed support that stabilizes housing, a core protective factor. This is delivering through partnerships with agencies like BISL and the EPL. When we combine provincial funding, city coordination, and community delivery, we don't just manage safety costs, we reduce them. So before we open the floor to your questions, I'd like to quickly recap the purpose of this presentation and discuss where we go from here. We've covered the foundational context of this focus area, outlining the complexities and the strategic outcomes we are targeting. Our goal was to provide you with high-level understanding of the challenges and solutions that relate to this focus area and to help prepare you in your role as governors as we move forward doing this important work together. Today was just the beginning of our time connecting on this important work, and we know you are interested in digging into it in further detail. You will be engaging with our strategies and solutions in greater detail through the upcoming council reports, such as the Municipal Traffic Safety Expansion Options, Equitable Recreation Programming Plan, One Year in Review of the Public Spaces Bylaw, to name a few. Specifically for our housing work, you can expect critical updates to maintain the momentum. We'll be concluding the Housing Accelerator Fund Initiative, which necessitates defining the long-term path forward in partnership with the Government of Alberta. You'll also see updates to the Affordable Housing Strategy and the Homelessness and Housing Services Plan to reflect emerging needs. The Department and Branch Presentations in March of 2026, where we will provide you an overview of department and branch budgets, outlining key cost drivers that impact budgets and service levels. These presentations will include more detail about how safety and security is addressing the work of the departments and branches. And finally, the 27 to 30 budget deliberations, where you will ultimately approve our budget that will span your term as council. This process ensures that when we discuss safety and security, we do so with a complete understanding of both the desired outcomes and the resources required. As I conclude this presentation, a few questions for your reflection and discussion. What did we miss that you feel is important, or other insights you have on this topic? What is important for you to know? And what criteria is important for you to support these safety and security efforts? Is there anything we've shared with you today that doesn't align with what you heard during the election? And what does success in safety and security look like for you? With that, I'll pass it over to Eddie.
That concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer questions.
No time for questions. But I already sort of gave the heads up to my colleague, since this presentation was looking to be very thorough, and we really appreciate that. I know there's more folks than even on the board that have questions, so I've suggested two things to our colleagues, one of which is, they can always reach out directly if you have questions. And then if, depending on how many questions you get, if you feel that there is a need to, at a next orientation meeting, just be able to do questions on that in public, we can do that. If you feel that the questions are short enough that you can just respond, then do that as well. But let's start by asking council colleagues that if you have questions, please send them over. And then they can make a determination of whether they'll just add that to a future orientation, or if they're short enough for that. So, because we are at 11:57, so there's no time. Because I know it's not just those two. Counselor Elliott has questions, I know Counselor Pickett had questions, and I'm guessing others might have had questions. I'm seeing some nodding heads. So if we've got that many questions, we'll just maybe think to see at the next orientation adding a time slot for Q and A on this one.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Okay, let's plan for that then, actually, instead of you just sending questions over. I saw enough nodding heads that that appears to be the right course of action. Wonderful. Well, we will... Just a few other things. Really, the only other thing I have to do before we hit 12 o'clock is the notices of motion, or motions without customary notice. I believe there is one notice of motion. Counselor Janz?